Good afternoon. Welcome to this episode's edition of the Rich Urban Show. I'm your host, Rich Urban. We bring you news and views from the education principle point of view. We're happy to have Jack Hepstey on. He's running for county commission in the unexpired term in the Charles Town District here in Jefferson County. So please introduce yourself.
I'm Jack Hepstey. You've probably seen my signs or me around Jefferson County. I like to describe myself as a liberty minded constitutional and fiscal conservative. And every one of those words is important to me. I'm liberty minded. I'm open minded. I want to protect people's personal rights. I'm a constitutional conservative. Constitution is my guideline for everything I do in the civil world. The Bible's my guideline for the religious world. And I'm a conservative and that means I I prefer smaller government and I'd like to see residents in Jefferson County and for that matter, the entire nation be able to spend more of their money and not obstructed by onerous taxes. That's me in nutshell.
All right. Well, since you mentioned taxes, well, there are a couple of related issues. One thing is our school taxes of our, the percentage of our property tax is 72% right now. And almost 40% is for the so-called excess levy, which I still haven't got all the data about this due by law, but I'll keep asking for it. Do you think we should continue having this very large excess levy? I know that's not something you decided, the county commissioner, but it's certainly related to how people spend their money. Or it gets taken or whatever.
I understand exactly where you're coming from because the way I view it is looking at the statistics is I believe we're one of the highest states as far as dollars per student.
Yeah, it's pretty high, higher than Virginia.
Yeah, and we've got some of the lowest results were usually 49th or 50th. And whereas I support education. My druthers, I don't have any children that are school age. I've grandchild at school age. But if, if I lived in Jefferson County, I would be looking to homeschool or charter school. Just because I think that the education is more focused on important stuff and less on what I call social stuff.
Fair enough.
And I'm concerned about that. But I mean, I know we have many, many fine teachers in Jefferson County and I want to salute them. But, and I know they've got a lot of challenges with managing the children in their classes. But I, I don't think that continuing the levy is a good deal. Because I haven't seen a results off of the money that they've been given thus far.
Yeah.
That's my conservative viewpoint, so.
Yeah, I might also mention, I'm still diving into it, but it appears that only about 20% or something like that goes to actual like teaching staff and our office has 44, currently 44 staff. Like one for, well, let's see here, I have my sheet, one for every 187 students. Canaan County had four, has or had 47 for 25,000 students or one for every 540. It's very bloated. It's also non-transparent. Also, I'm finding out they're sitting on, I think, I've got to double check what I just got from the superintendent, something like $35 million extra collected over the last three years from the levy. But now they want to renew it again. Anyway, so yeah, it's not transparent.
Speaking of I was at a briefing last night at the League of Women Voters Forum that they had. All, all the county commissioner candidates were there. It was nice forum. It was very professional and very civil. But toward the end of the, of the meeting, we had a person there whose name escapes me who gave a briefing about the school levy. And basically they're I'm, I don't want to say hitting the panic button, but they're concerned that now since the legislature has has forbidden special elections. So you can only do this type of thing on a general election or a primary. Those are the two exceptions. And they were pretty good about, you know, doing those special elections, which guaranteed a low turnout of voters and pretty much assured them that they would would get their funding requests, their levy passed. And I always thought that was a little underhanded because they, I mean, these type of issues should really go before the full electorate. I hope people pay attention to it and there's plenty of strong arguments out there against it. Like I say, it's, I don't, I'm not anti-education or anti-students. But I'm not seeing a bang for the buck that they're getting.
I think a lot of people, including myself, I'm still trying to figure out exactly how it works. But the way it's worded and the fact that they don't have transparency and they're not explaining what they've spent the money on. And even though legally now they have to give a list of all the employees. Well, by September 30th for the last fiscal year, well, I didn't get it yet and it's overdue and I've asked for a number of times. So I mean, why are they dragging their feet like with their 44 staff? And since the fiscal year ended three months ago, they can't come up with a list of everybody's salary? Something's going on, you know what I mean?
It, it concerns me when there is a lack of transparency that the reason is because they're either manipulating the numbers or they're hiding the real numbers. And that concerns me in, in government statewide, national, and of course, in our beloved county of Jefferson. I, although I, on the county commission, for instance, I think some things have are moving in the right direction.
Yes.
The county commissioner that they hired, Edwina Benitez, is very stable, very level-headed. I knew her before she was in that position. And she oozes competence. And I just hope that she doesn't throw in the towel. Because I know she's overburdened because they're having a lot of staffing shortages. I think she's doing a pretty good job, at least thus far. I'm seeing all good things coming out of her and I hope that continues. I don't want her to get burned out, but.
Yeah. So talking about our local budget on another tune, the budget of the, you know, county budget. Like could, could we be saving money or is it like well streamlined or, you know, what do you think?
Well, you just have to ask the $64 question, or maybe it's the $40 million question. I'm not really sure how much money is there for us to allocate. But what I will say is that county commissioners, the number one thing that they do, in my opinion, is budget allocations. And what, what happens every year is we get requests from numerous functionaries out there that, that want money from the county. A lot of them have been going up to the money. You know, withdrawing money from the county for many, many years. But I always thought when I was listening to a lot of the presentations, that the questions that were being asked by the county commissioners, some of them were good, but a lot of them were pretty weak. And it's like nobody wants to offend anybody by asking a tough question. And my opinion is, is a lot of these people that request money do, are doing a great job insofar as what they're managing. But I want to know exactly what they're doing insofar as are, how are they raising money to help their situation on their own? Are they applying for federal grants? What kind of incomes do they have to supplement what we are allocating to them? The other thing is I want to see in their presentation, something from our county administrators that are closer to the budget. Exactly how much of the money that they spent in previous years? What they were given in previous years, go back at least three years, but as much as five. And see what they've been getting and how much of it has been spent. And I would like a to the penny accounting for everything that has been given to them and how they have spent it.
I agree. That's kind of the same principle with the board of education, kind of dumbfounded like, okay, we gave us 17 million for salaries. What would you spend it on? Hey, we told you what we spent it on. We spent it on salaries. Let's move along. Come on, what do you mean? You know what I mean?
That, it's like I say is when I was in the military and at, in aerospace, we frequently did a lot of interviewing of people who were candidates for jobs or who were doing something, putting forth engineering changes. Or they had an idea to present for doing things process wise or in the military better. And some people could make a three-minute presentation and I didn't get a single picture in my head. Because all of the words they used were existential. And, and I want, I want presentations that actually tell me something, not talk around the issue. And that's what I've seen before. And no offense to any commissioners that are, are there now or have been there recently. But it's really an acquired talent that you get from doing things over a number of years. I was in the Navy, I think, you know, I was in the Navy for 24 years. Now, in all those years, I was not in, I was not a top dog. But the last, over the last dozen years that I was, I was in the Navy, most of the time I was an executive officer or a commanding officer in units that dealt with budgets, interviews, people. And then when I was in the aerospace industry, I was on some rather large classified programs that I can't tell you about. Except that they were big and they were expensive. And we would have engineers that would put forth changes and they were always non-cost bearing. Wrong. They were cost-bearing. But being able to write, ask a good question is paramount to this job. I, I do, I don't want to get too wonky with that. But my program management skills that I learned was the three elements of every, every project are cost. What does it cost? Technical, what are the technical changes or elements?
Okay.
And what is the schedule? And those are the three things that I want to be.
Yeah. Well, talking about the budget to interject a little. Yeah. So what do you, well, and this could be related to budget or not, but what do you think the biggest challenge for our county is right now?
Well, the place that I would like to see a bigger surge of, in budget, if possible, is first responders. As you probably know, our Jefferson County Police are operating with 35 qualified, very qualified officers.
Okay.
But according to the population that we have in the county, there should be at 70. So they're about a 50%. And doing a wonderful job at, at half staff, but I would like to see them get a boost.
Is that because they don't, what are they requesting on their side?
I think what they're requesting is, is more policemen.
But not 70, right?
No, it would be 35 because they're 35 now. So it would be a boost of 35. I don't know that it's fiscally possible for us to give the sheriff's office 35.
But have they, what I was trying to say is have they actually asked for that many more officers?
The last county commission meeting, the sheriff made a presentation complaining that that they were doing the work of 70 with 35. And then they're, they're getting a lot of new people in and they're getting a lot of what I would call burnout. With people that go and you can get more money, you know, in other counties for less work. But something really needs to be done there with the police firing ambulance. I think the independent fire companies are still doing a great job. I still have concern about ambulance.
What about having a firehouse like, we have the, up here on, in Shenondale on the mountain, we have the Keys, Blue Ridge Volunteer Fire Company, Keys Gap Road. But however, we're not, Shenondale itself, especially when you continue down Mission Road by the lake, isn't that close to that? They do have that substation, but seems to be basically dormant now, I think. Or maybe they have a fire engine there. Anyway, should we have a firehouse or a fire company in Shenondale? And if so, like I was talking to Mike Mood, he said that volunteer fire companies decide that themselves. And that also you could form a new fire company. I don't think too many people probably do that. What should we do about that? It seems underserved.
I've known Mike Mood for a long time. He's got a outstanding handle on, on the problem. And if he says that, I'm going to, going to ask questions, of course, but I have tendency to believe anything he says. He's very, very well informed.
Yeah. I didn't mean it was wrong, but it's more like, okay, I mean, I don't know how volunteer fire companies work exactly. But it seems like with the decline in volunteering generally, not maybe just fire companies. I know the county got more involved with the ambulances. Well, I'm wondering, is it realistic to expect the Blue Ridge Fire Company or whatever to, like if Shenondale needs a firehouse, can they just do it themselves? Or wouldn't it be in concert with the county, obviously, or whatever?
Well, yes and no, but, but I mean, you'd have to have a lot of upfront money if you wanted to build a new firehouse. Or if you wanted to refurbish the existing one, which I would prefer refurbishment over a new one. But that's where the, the federal money comes in because there's pots of money available.
Well, the firehouse on Keys Gap was refurbished. But the problem is it's just as far from Shenondale as the one in Charlestown.
And that's a bummer. I keep hearing that they've got Rover patrols that just drive around blindly in case there's a phone call so they can improve their statistics on response time.
I don't know about that.
I, I haven't seen it myself and I drive around a lot in the county and I've never seen it. But that's what I'm told.
Who's they? Keys Gap or somebody else?
I'd rather not mention names.
Okay. Maybe we're getting off a little, but.
I think, I think you know that there's the people that, that shut down a lot of the services locally are trying to justify their, their decision.
Oh, yeah. What about another safety issue? Let's leave that aside. I mean, not leave it aside, but you know, leave that rest for a second. The, the another, again, it's not just really a count, it's partially kind of. Anyway, there's no southern exit for Shenondale. Here we have five, 6,000 people, one windy two-lane road. If there's an accident on the road, good luck getting any fire EMS response. That's not really acceptable. I mean, that needs some action, like maybe the county can push it as, of course, well as the state to have a study of feasibility of different possibilities, but that really needs to move forward. Or do you have any opinion on it?
Yeah, I agree with you on that. It's, there is a safety concern and a transportation, transportation concern that I have on that. I have a general question mark with roads because so much of the roads are Department of Highway.
Right, state.
Yeah, and they're an entity to themselves. And on different, other boards that I, I'm on, the Department of Highways come up and with their input is going to be, we get a general rolling of the eyes.
But you guys could weigh in on, I think.
We could weigh in on a lot of things, but the Department of Highways is pretty, pretty difficult to influence. But I, I mean, I'm always up to making a phone call or trying to get some sort of a resolution or letter put together by, by all the county commissioners that would help the problem. The, the question is, is how many county commissioners are willing to rock the boat?
Okay. What about the, you mentioned first responders. Should there be an ambulance up here on the mountain? It seems like it. There used to be. Well, again, it's partially a matter of placement because I guess now we have Charlestown, of course, has the ambulance, but that's not the mountain. I mean, it, it's just like, this seems neglected. It seems like we, we need to, that needs to be seriously reconsidered.
I'm in totally, total agreement with you. Again, I was talking to Mike Mu just recently. And I said, I would really favor the, the ambulances returned to the firehouse because I, I think that them spread out a little bit better is, is good for the county. And Michael was concerned that a lot of the firehouses would now not want to take back the ambulances. So that needs to be looked into, but I agree. It's, it's, it seems to me, every time I go out to the mountain, it seems like there's one or two ways in and not really easy to get out. And if I want to go across the county, it's like I have to go back in, I have to go south to get, that would be east. And it, it, it just, the roads just aren't set up for.
No, I mean, you've only got Mission.
A centralized location sounds like a great idea, but you're not getting, you're not, you don't have good transit to the mountain. Bakersfield is a little hard to drive to. Middleway's easier, but it's certainly more rural. So I want to look at the thing, the whole thing 360 degrees.
Okay.
When we get in, and I think the other, at least the commissioners that I've talked to, and even the ones that aren't of the same political party as me. I think we're pretty much agreement that any of these deals that have been made in the last couple of years need a review and perhaps a scrub and some modifications. But when the, I, I'm concerned about the surveys that are put together. Because as you know, you can manipulate statistics
Right.
in many, many ways. And I want somebody that's, that not, that's not tied to anybody on the county commission to do a, a study. That's, that's what I say. And a reasonably priced study. But I, I'm concerned about that because safety, you know, fire, police and ambulance are the three most important things that I think the county does allocations for. There are other great organizations, don't get me wrong, but those are the top three in my book.
Right. Yeah. And yeah, definitely. Yeah. I might throw in a plug for improving us. I know we don't pick up trash in the county, but we do have, you know, you can take stuff to the dump and whatever, and that needs upgrading too. But we won't belabor that, but you know. I know, because I've taken stuff there and there's a big line. You gotta wait an hour or whatever just to drop off some oil or glass bottles because it's like not designed properly. Anyway, that's a legitimate county issue, much more like you say, than doling out funds to some nonprofits or whatever. Because solid waste management or recycling is up the alley of the county, you know?
I was, I was joking with another commissioner candidate that if I do get elected, when I show up, I might bring a shovel. Because I feel like we're digging out and there's a lot of things that haven't been addressed or they've been flat neglected over the past couple of years. In favor of what I might, might consider to be more egotistical or localized to the individual. And as, as I've told you many times before, I don't have a special interest. I don't own large property. I don't own a business in Jefferson County. It's very important to me that everything I do or work on has got to have some sort of beneficial tract for, for the residents. And, and I like the ideas, idea of when we have a big issue, that we have a town hall and solicit citizen input. Now, although I'm all in favor of citizen input, one of my opponents in the election is favoring a vote or referendum on every issue. And of course, with the elections, the way they are, that would mean that if we wanted to do something, we wouldn't be able to put it on a ballot until 2026 primary. And by then the house could have burned down. It's kind of like the house is on fire.
How is a referendum process anyway? I'm not so familiar with it. Do we, I thought we didn't have, you can initiate a referendum. I was looking it up. Some places citizens can initiate referendums, but I don't think that's not West Virginia. Can you explain it?
What I understand is the state legislature removed the option for special elections. So the only time you can actually hold an election is during a regularly scheduled primary for the federal elections.
Okay.
That would mean that if, if there was some big issue that we needed to take care of in the county, one of my opponents wants that to go on a ballot. Wants everything to go on a ballot.
But I guess what I'm asking is, I, I got to look it up again. I was looking up not too long ago. That, like the, I think the process now for referendums is, I'm not sure what it is, but I'm pretty sure it's not citizen initiated. So I guess what I'm saying is if this referendum for whatever was on the ballot, who initiates it? Who approves it?
Well, that's interesting. If you get any insight to that, I'd sure like to hear about it because.
Well, I'm pretty sure it's not, West Virginia is not one of the states. Like if I decide I want an XYZ issue, like solar issue on the, on the ballot or wind energy or something. That's not, you can't do that in West Virginia from the citizens getting so many signatures. I think it has to initiate through the legislature. I'm not sure about, for each county.
You, you could be right, but I'm pretty sure that the, as far as, as far as Jefferson County is concerned, we're pretty much plugged into the holding those types of issues on the primary or general election dates.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's, let's, speaking of the solar thing. Yeah. So I, I know you're on the planning commission and we just had the, we have the comprehensive plan. And one other candidate was telling me they should send it back to drawing board because it's really lacking. And anyway, what I'm trying to say is, what's your take on the solar development? Should we be removing the by right language that we have now in the, I guess, our local ordinances? And having a different process for solar development?
The comprehensive plan is one thing. And recently, we had a request where we put out more asking for citizen input. The meeting, two meetings ago, I think it was, we went through the citizen inputs. And I was, I was pretty happy with the results of that. Because I thought it was going to be a fight, every word to change every word. But they did remove by right, which was frequently in the thing. It's gone. But they.
But what about the, but, but my understanding is, correct me if I'm wrong, because you make better verse. Right now, solar is, is whether it says by right or not, it's allowed. I did see some discussion about what you're talking about, but anyway, solar's allowed in urban development area? Well, by right, but I don't know. Anyway, I don't think that's been changed in the law.
Well, let me, let me finish. We had the, the vote on forwarding the comprehensive plan to the county commission at the last meeting. I was the only commissioner that voted against forwarding it. I don't think it's ready. It still has some problems. The, the focus I would put is on objective 1.4 and the action plan for 1.4. It's 1.4 dot 1 is one thing, but it looks to me, if you read that, it's anything goes. Anytime you can, anything you want to do in Jefferson County, you can do if you go out and get the permits. So there's no restriction on anything. That's, that bothers me about the comprehensive plan. That's, that's the main reason why I voted against the comprehensive plan because of 1.4. And then I don't think that the county should be a playground for every developer and realtor that wants to make big bucks. So the, the other thing I didn't like is the, the comprehensive plan is a complete. The the comprehensive plan is a completely revised and replaced. There's no traceability from the old plan to the new plan. If you can do that, uh it's well above my pay grade because it's, the rewriting has been um. Masterful insofar as you can't, you know, it wasn't previously paragraph two dot six. You you can't find that anywhere. Additionally, a lot of things were left out of the new comprehensive plan that were in the old comprehensive plan. Uh the one statistic that I can give you is um the old comprehensive plan. Use the word beauty twenty seven times.
Yeah, I looked in, I didn't read the new one, actually, I guess.
But the new one says.
All one I did.
It uses it zero. Um, and I want to know what's professional staff. Who's doing a briefing at the next uh uh regular county commission, they need to tell people. What's new that wasn't there before, what was there and has been deleted, and can they provide a trace?
Well, exactly. It should build on it. And I guess one of the uh commissioners, Cara uh Cara. Keys was telling me since she's into like um. Like you, I guess she's on the planning commission, but anyway, she's telling me, so it's a little two issues that the comprehensive plan is more like a. Vision. These aren't her words, this is my understanding. If I'm wrong, correct me. Whereas the actual county ordinance, so-called solar text amendment. Legally, that's what allows the like solar farms. And what I wanted to ask you is also, but. Would you remove that text amendment so the solar farms would have to be, go through a rigorous process, not not like they are now?
Well, yes, I I believe the solar text uh amendment was repealed uh before the two lady commissioners were removed. Uh I was.
But they put it back, remember?
That's the way I remember it, but one of the county commissioners says. That that solar text amendment was sent back to the planning commission for rework. I'm on the planning commission, I've never seen it.
No, I think that's.
Back, I haven't seen it.
No, I think, so I'll I'll check that after the show, but so yeah, they they removed it. And then, of course, there was a big brouhaha with Mr. Solifer and so on. And they um put it back, almost a hundred percent certain.
Well, uh just to give you a little trace, when it was repealed. Um, the the two ladies who have since been removed. Uh demanded that one of the county commission recuse himself from the vote. Because of all the ties that he has in solar.
Right.
Did recuse himself, and at that time, there were only four commissioners. He left the room, that left uh Jane and the two uh removed ladies, and the vote was uh two to one. To rescind the solar text amendment. Fast forward. When uh. Two new county commissioners were added to replace the two that had been removed. It was brought up again. And the president of the commission did not recuse himself from the vote as he had before. He is involved in it uh heavily in solar.
Right.
And I I thought the vote at that point was to reinstate the solar text amendment. Well, to answer your initial question, I want to remove the solar text amendment. I want zoning laws to be changed. Uh I've talked to Cara Keys about that. She's pretty good about uh zoning stuff. And uh I would like stronger um. Regulations on solar text, much larger setbacks, but. Here's the bottom line, uh Richard, and and this is where I'm coming from. We have five solar uh compounds that are through the gate. They comprise about two point one percent of uh Jefferson County.
Wow.
Three thousand three hundred and ninety eight square acres.
It's a lot.
That's a lot of acreage, and the bad part is uh most of those, well, I think all of those solar uh projects. Are on uh main drags. So they're very visible to the county.
Wasn't the Wild Hill one effectively killed, or is that still going?
It it's still, uh I think it has all the permits, and now some of those permits could expire.
But I thought the developers said without the pilot that was voted down, they won't do it.
That works for me. I mean, I'm not going to object that because I think uh the the only benefit. That I see remaining for for solar farms is the revenue, tax revenue that we might get off of it, and so far, we haven't seen a penny. None of it has been assessed for taxes. But the other thing I wanted to bring up uh with you, Richard, is. Uh those five solar farms, projects, compounds, factories, whatever you want to call them. Are at the max limit for the transmission lines that are current. If any more solar projects are brought into the county. There's high-rise uh solar uh uh transmission lines. New transmission lines will have to be added.
I saw there was a meeting about that. I hadn't heard about that, about some huge corridor they want to put through for some kind of big power line.
As a matter of fact, uh it's coming up here. I'd like to put a a plug in it if I can find it in my notes.
Is that the one at Community Connection?
It's going to be if the corner, it's called the Corner Connection.
Corner Connection.
Yeah, Corner Connection. It's right across, it's Catty Corner from the library in Charlestown.
Yeah, so you're recommending anyone interested to attend that?
Anybody uh can attend at once, but I I'm certainly going to go to it. I want to hear all the stuff and uh. The people that are uh putting against the, putting up the information. Have done a lot of uh what I would call deep research. And they're all very well informed, and at least in my experience in dealing with that group, I haven't found any uh. Anytime when they put something up that couldn't be uh.
Okay.
Backed up with uh substantiation. Uh the person, I hate to give her her name over the internet. But if you look up Jackie Milliron, M I L L I R O N. I think she's a, she's a focal point for for that meeting.
Okay, cool. All right, well, we've covered a number of issues. Um, so. Anything else you'd like to say about your candidacy or your difference from your opponents? And um why the voters should uh choose you as we, you know, come toward the conclusion?
Well, uh. I've been thinking a lot about that and how to make a concise summary.
Okay.
One of my uh opponents is um a very, very liberal Democrat. Uh last night at the forum, he came out in full support of LGBTQ. And uh the ordinance that was passed a couple of years ago uh about drag queen shows.
Right.
Uh he said it prevented, it it removed drag queen shows. I think the ordinance prevented uh uh children. Eighteen years and younger from attending a drag queen show.
Right, I think that's correct.
Are still, are still there if uh if that's your uh, if that's your turn to go on, they're still there. Uh there's a lot of that type of misinformation. Earlier on in the campaign, when I went on his campaign page, he said he was anti-solar, but he supported the rest of the Green New Deal. Which includes wind turbines.
Hmm.
Mandatory electric cars by twenty thirty two. That's only uh eight years away.
Right.
Actually, less than eight years away, but it's basically the Democratic uh Green New Deal platform. And a lot of that is, if you want to buy an electric car, if you want to put solar panels on your house, go for it. But re- remember that it'll be ten years or so before you uh you break even. And the technology is uh is changing so rapidly. But a lot of that stuff uh is going to be obsolete in the very, very near future. Uh the other person I'm running against is uh uh Mountain Party.
Right.
Which is. At least their platform uh is far more liberal than the Democrats. And um the the individual is a very interesting character. Uh I enjoy listening to him at every uh every meeting that uh that I go to, especially the county commission meetings. Where he gives uh a a three-minute speech pretty much about himself, offers a lot of criticisms. But I don't hear many solutions. Uh like I said, one of the things that he's big on is he wants everything to go to a a full county vote.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
So and the other thing he does is, as engaging as he is, he uh pretty much insults the county commissioners every meeting. And uh I may not like everybody that's county commissioner. But uh I have a cordial relationship. I want to keep a cordial relationship regardless of whoever is elected.
They're kind of oppositional.
You're gonna have to work with them.
Right.
So I'm not going to throw rocks and call names.
All right.
Has has gotten uh gotten us into a lot of the problems that we're in now, is these people just got a little too worked up.
Okay, so anything else you wanted to say, otherwise, but bring it toward a conclusion, it looks like.
I would.
Clear differentiation.
Basically, uh if if someone has a question, I wish they would contact me personally.
Okay.
I think it's it's pretty interesting. Uh one thing I would like to bring up is there's a very, very negative uh. Uh site out there, and I'm not taking them too seriously because I'm pretty much sure that I am who they are. But for one thing, they gave me um one hundred percent credit for writing the solar text amendment. And first of all, I'm on the planning commission, so planning commission doesn't approve that. It goes to the the county commission. Secondly, I wasn't on the subcommittee that wrote it. So I had, and believe me, they didn't ask my input uh on it because I think it was fairly well known. I'm I'm not their solar guy. Uh they didn't want my input, but with all that said, I think when the solar text amendment first came up. Uh we were being fed uh a line from the developers. And it's turned out that the developers uh did not meet their conditions. And I think that uh if I'm elected county commissioner, all of the proffers that were offered and approved in the resolution. Should uh be enforced. And there should be heavy fines when they're not enforcing the stuff that was offered. Secondly is um.
Oh, like the Blake Solar Farm and the runoff and all that stuff?
Blake Solar Farm is abs- probably one of the worst uh solar uh farms. Maybe in the United States, but it's been horrendous and they didn't do any favors to any, any of the uh the following. But the other thing that people don't understand is uh the planning commission, which I've been a member of for eight years. Uh I've never missed a meeting and I have never had to recuse myself from any issue because I had a conflict of interest.
Hmm, that's good to know.
But uh and I pledge, I pledge that if I'm elected, I will attend all of those subboards. I want, I want to go for uh perfect attendance. Um, the the other thing is, is that most all of those uh of those solar farms. Are put forward under a conditional use permit, and that sounds like a little bit wonky. But wh- what happens is in a commission, uh uh a conditional use permit. The path for approval goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals before it comes to the Planning Commission. And if it's approved there, we can't reverse it. The only thing that the Planning Commission has any say on is the site plan and uh the proffers. And so when I have voted for. Some people are saying I voted for solar, I voted for the proffers in the resolution, which made the conditions. For the solar developers more severe. So it's kind of, you're doing the right thing and other people are doing the right thing. All the planning commissioners, most of those votes have been unanimous. Uh are asking that the solar developers do more.
Right.
Last one that came through, I voted against because I was totally convinced that um. That the developers had not done significant community outreach. The number one complaint we got during the hearing was. I didn't know about this, never heard about it, never got any notification. And they're required by law to uh give notification to everybody within a certain radius of the uh development. So that's, that's the other thing is there's a lot of misinformation going on. I'm sure about other candidates too. Um. I.
Okay.
I I have a hard time. I don't lie. I just try not to lie or uh I may soften uh a comment. But I'm not a liar, and I I want things to be done right and. If if any of those things that are being said about me were true, I probably would have dropped out of the race a long time ago, so.
All right, transparency, integrity, that's important. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I have one more thing for you.
Okay.
I am pretty doggone sure that I'm the only uh county commissioner candidate, perhaps in history. That has ever passed a CIA lifestyle polygraph.
All right.
I was a ca- I was a a contractor for a large company that had uh contracts with uh. The CIA and the NRO, and I was subjected to a number.
All right. Well, actually, you know, uh personal lifestyle is is a thing. I mean, it's not just a thing. It's extremely crucial to have integrity on all levels, so I agree with that.
Well, and I was, I was promoted uh to rank Navy captain, oh six, and I was in the intelligence field. And they scrutinize uh people in that program very, very well. Like I say, my my dream world, I was in the intel, the Navy intel program. And and when I uh dealt with Marines, they were Marine intel. Uh we had Army intel people.
All right.
They were all squared away because they'd gone through the same sort of uh uh.
All right.
Integrity checks that uh that I had, so this.
Fair enough.
Experience for me.
Okay, well, we're gonna draw this to conclusion for the uh this interview. But we do uh urge everyone to make sure to vote on November fifth or early vote if you like. At the courthouse, I think it starts uh October twenty third, and not at the courthouse, Charles Washington Hall across from the courthouse. So.
Early voting starts on the twenty third of October.
Yes, it does.
It's, it's usually pretty quick. They have a maximum number of machines uh set up. You walk in and you're out of there in ten minutes or less, so.
All right.
Go informed and vote.
Yes. Okay, so thank you for joining us for this edition of the Rich Urban Show. You're host Rich Urban. Well, see you next time.